Glad to call us back in open session, we're ready to get started, we're waiting. We have one board member that will be joining us via the internet. I assume our technology person will have no problem doing that right on.
Middle of a major electrical storm out there, but no.
Yeah.
We have to go into open session?
We have a motion to go in open session, and second, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are in open session.
Bruce, can you hear us?
Uh, yes.
Welcome to the meeting.
We're going back in open session now, Mr. Shell, so feel free to make comments and contribute as you see fit, okay?
Good.
Uh, next item on the agenda, item four is superintendent's report, item A, student assignment appeals, Dr. Markley.
All right, this, uh, I need you guys to bring your calendars out, we had student assignments scheduled, but conflicts seem to have arisen on the student assignment date. Ms. Angeline has been collecting the enrollment numbers, and folks, our enrollment numbers for people choosing to go to other places is probably gonna hit a five-year high, is that correct, Dr. Hollander?
When you say other places, you mean other schools within the system?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
Places other than their assigned school, when that normally, uh, brings with it a higher number of appeals. So, at this time, we only had three folks who said they could make it on the originally scheduled date. So, we really need to do this before the end of June, folks. So, we need to, well, we need to send letters out next, is it next week? Tomorrow, with the dates of that appeals hearing, so we need to nail this one down tonight.
So, what dates were we?
Yeah, what were we?
What were the original?
I can do the twenty-second.
I can do the twenty-second.
I cannot do anything that week.
Okay.
What about the following week?
I can do the following week.
Cause I, I can't do the week before.
But you said they have, tell us again when the due date is?
So, you, the last, the twenty-seventh? The twenty-seventh through the thirtieth are the last four days you could possibly do it.
Do we need two days?
I'd like for us to hold two days just in case, because we are on a record five-year high for applications. So, we could, how about the twenty, um, eighth and the twenty-ninth?
I have a, I have a doctor's appointment on the twenty-eighth in the middle of the day.
Is it real bad, I mean, is it something?
Can you change it?
You know how hard, you know how long, you have to?
It's not that bad, we just?
Okay, how about the, what does the twenty-ninth and thirtieth look like?
I'm good, I'm good for that.
That's fine.
Mr. Shell, twenty-ninth and thirtieth of June?
No, I'll be out of, uh, I'll be out of town.
Well, what about the first part of the month? Are we, uh?
School's still in session. School's still in session.
We're, pardon? We're supposed to hold, uh, open the fourteenth for, in case of work sessions, so what about the fourteenth and fifteenth?
I'm out of town. I'm.
So, you didn't hold it?
I didn't hold it.
Okay.
Mr. Bullard, how many, what's the minimum you need to, to make this work?
We gotta have four board members, because we run, uh, two panels with, uh, two board members each.
We have four on the twenty-first, we just think that we're gonna need two rooms and maybe two days. We're gonna do two rooms and with four.
Can you do the, can you do that, go on the whole week at the twentieth?
We could, we could split, could we split them up? What about the twentieth, is that? Keeping it?
So, do we have four on the twenty-first at this point? How about the twentieth?
No, I'm gone, whole week.
You're gone, you're gone, whole week.
I can do the twentieth.
Well, what about the, what about doing half of them on the fourteenth and half of them on the twenty-first? Cause it sounds like the fourteenth is good for everyone but me. Um, so you would have six.
I can, I can do the fourteenth.
I'd do the fourteenth.
I can do the fourteenth as well, so.
What did, did we rule out the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth? I thought we had some.
I mean, that's fine with me.
He's got his doctor's appointment on the twenty-seventh.
And Bruce, and Bruce was gone.
And Bruce is gone.
Bruce, can you do the fourteenth?
Yes.
That's four.
So, we could do the fourteenth and the twenty-first.
Can, can you have, wait a minute, can you have everything ready by the fourteenth, though? Instead of the fourteenth to the twenty-eighth, then?
Okay, cause at that point, we're only losing, uh, Bruce.
Well, how many are available, twenty-seventh through the thirtieth, Ed, you're not, right?
Twenty, uh, I, the, midday twenty-eighth's the only day I'm not a board.
Okay.
Okay, can we do twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth?
Yes, I can do that.
How's that look?
Bruce is out of town.
We had, you might have told it an alternate location.
I read Spencer.
Spencer or school location.
Spencer would work.
We've done Spencer before.
Yes, we've, we've done.
Yeah.
Now, if you wanna hold them in consecutive days, just for ease, does the twenty-ninth and thirtieth work, Wednesday and Thursday?
Does for me.
Does for me.
Does for me.
I'm good, I'm good.
All right.
Bruce, how about the twenty-ninth and thirtieth? Oh, no, you're gone.
He's gone.
He's out that whole week.
But that'll give us, okay.
Five, maybe six.
Guaranteed five and possibly six.
Okay.
Location to be announced.
I, I think Spencer works well, because parents would know that location opposed to. And we're be imposing on schools that are trying to start cleaning up.
We've done that before until we can't.
So, we say the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth?
Yes. Thank you for working with us. Like I said, we do, and I would tell you folks, just plan the whole day, we're anticipating, uh, a, a large number.
And no doctor's appointments, Ed.
Until afterwards, you don't need.
No more doctor's appointments.
Uh, you la, you ladies know how them doctors appointment.
Just don't go.
That it?
Yep.
All right, item five, administrative personnel, item A, administrative contract renewals, appendix A, Dr. Wilmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, uh, I'd like to recommend the following individuals for renewal of their administrative contract. This would be principals and assistant principals, and their contracts would be from July one, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Uh, and I'll just run down the list very quickly, if it's all right, it's your pleasure. Uh, for principals, Cindy Bliss, currently at Castle Hayne Elementary School, Tim Domonowski, Murrayville Elementary School, Maria Green, College Park Elementary School, Bonnie Hall, Wrightsboro Elementary School, Lauren Kephalitis, Bradley Creek Elementary School, Eric Furman, Cottington Elementary School, Paul Slovic, Winter Park Elementary School, and Cindy Talbert, Snipes Elementary Academy of Arts and Design. Then the assistant principals are David Bitner, New Hanover High School, David Bostian, Noble Middle School, Stephanie Boldy Martin, Laney High School, Teresa Conley, Snipes Elementary Academy of Arts and Design, Robert Harrell, Holly Shelter Middle School, Mandy James, Forest Hills Global Elementary School, Deanna Lee, Murray Middle School, Salvatore Marisco, Laney High School, Laura Nofziger-Nalipa, Murray Middle School, Sonia Oats, Freeman Elementary School of Engineering, Kate Taylor, Pine Valley Elementary School, and Andrea Zwali, Winter Park Elementary School.
That's it?
Those are the principals and assistant principals.
Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Question, uh, all of these are renewals?
Uh, yes, sir.
So, they'll all be for four years?
That's right.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved, thank you. Item B, administrative recommendation, appendix double A, Dr. Wilmers.
Uh, for employment, for renewal of employment contracts for, uh, these folks, this would be one-year contracts running from July one, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Supervisors would include Emma Jackson, Instructional Director of Elementary Education, Ms. Laverne Pickett, Instruction Supervisor of Career Technical, and then under Program Coordinators, Colleen Pate, who is at Isaac Bear Early College High School, and Donnie Watkins, who is at Wilmington Early College High School.
There a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, and Dr. Markley has some more?
Yes, uh, we have a couple more recommendations, but first, let me announce three transfers that will take place. First, Ms. Krista Holland will be going from Gregory, uh, over to Anderson Elementary, effective July one. Ms. Holland is here, and that's not, doesn't require board approval, but I would like to recognize her for her efforts at Gregory, and wish her well in her new, uh, assignment. And then Ms. Bonnie Hall, who's currently at Wrightsboro Elementary, will be moving over to Forest Hills, uh, effective again on July one. We wish her well in that new assignment. And then Mandy James, who you just approved for assistant principal, will be moving from Forest Hills to Partially Elementary. So, those are the ones that are transferring. Uh, some new recommendations, and we'll take these individually. First one is I'd like to recommend Ms. Sharon Ducharme, who's currently the principal at Trask Middle School, to be the principal at Laney High School. Uh, she has a master's, uh, in education and a bachelor's in arts and science, both from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington. She worked, uh, at Laney as a, both as a teacher and as an assistant principal, and I would ask the board to approve this recommendation.
Move for approval?
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Mr. Charm is here, did you bring anybody with you?
Just me.
Our second recommendation, since Ms. Ducharme is moving across the road to, uh, to Laney, that opens up a vacancy at Trask, and it is my pleasure to recommend Dr. Margaret Rollinson to be the principal at Heidi Trask, I mean, at Traska Middle School. She comes to us from Heidi Trask. In Pender County, as, as well as currently working at Hager. Uh, she began her teaching career in Rowan County, uh, in North Rowan Middle School. Her contract will be in effect until June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. She has a doctorate in education and leadership and a master's in education from UNCW, and a bachelor's degree in business administration from University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. I'd ask for, uh, approval of that recommendation.
Dr. Markley, you said two thousand nineteen, why?
Initial contract as a principal, so it's a two-year contract.
But two years is, wouldn't be nineteen?
Seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, June of two thousand nineteen.
Sixteen, seventeen?
Seventeen, eight, should be eighteen, correct. We'll correct that.
You used your fingers, but we got it.
Move for approval? Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Dr. Rollinson, you got some folks there with you, it looks like? Our final recommendation of the evening is, uh, one I'm excited about, is Mr. Duke Wallen to be the CTE High School Program Coordinator. Mr. Wallen currently is the CTE facilitator at Hagerd High School, while at Hagerd, he served as the career development teacher facilitator and program coordinator. Prior to Hagerd, he served as a CTE technical agent coordinator with Moore County Schools in North Carolina, CTE Education Administrator Intern in Oswego County, up in, uh, New York, and is, uh, career development coordinator with Stanley County Schools in North Carolina. Began his teaching career in Charlotte Meck as a CTE instructor. He has a master's degree in vocational education administration from State University of, of New York at Oswego, and earned his BS degree in vocational education and BA in arts from the same state university in New York in Oswego. My pleasure to recommend Duke Wallen.
Move for approval.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Duke, do you have anyone with you?
Just me.
All right. That concludes your administrative recommendations.
Thank you, item six, under old business, item A, twenty sixteen, seventeen, proposed county budget request, appendix B, Dr. Markley.
All right, I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Hazel, uh, Mary Hazel Small to give me hands as we work through this. Uh, as you know, the county reduced, uh, recommended, the county manager recommended a twenty-seven hundred dollar budget to, uh, the county commissioners, so we made some adjustments to our county recommendation to match that twenty-seven hundred, and we are presenting that for approval tonight, and for any discussion on additional items.
Just wanted to mention the changes that we made, we, um, removed, we, during the budget process, when we expanded from twenty-seven hundred to twenty-seven fifty, we had added five additional middle school counselors, so we were gonna postpone those for another year. And we also reduced, you can see on the, the first page there, we reduced the non-certified and central office administrative recommendations by a third. Um, we had planned to do a three-year catch-up, so this would allow us to do two. It's all depending on the state budget and how far the raises go there, but we will go as far as we can. And then we also delayed the implementation of the, um, timekeeping workforce development system that we wanted to have. So, we'll, that, those are the items that we removed from the presentation. Also, just changed a little bit on the, the, um, the cover sheet, slightly different from last time, I broke out the, the portion of county revenue that goes to charter schools, so it wouldn't be quite as confusing. The, um, we receive an operating allotment, um, and we also receive a char, uh, um, capital allotment for three million. The operating allotment that we would keep in New Hanover County Schools would total seventy-one, four thirty-six, six hundred. The charter school portion would be slightly over two point five million, and then the capital would be three million. But everything else is as it was presented at your last meeting.
The teacher supplements, um.
Questions for Mary Hazel?
Why, um, we have budgeted here secondary area technical coordinators, um, what was the decision-making process behind, um, those positions as opposed to keeping in the middle school counselors?
The only, we just took out the things that we had added later in the process, um, and so, it's really up to the board. You could, you could rearrange the priorities any way you want. You know, we sent a draft and didn't hear back, so we assumed that, that these recommendations were fine, but, you know, what you're really approving tonight is the amount, the twenty-seven hundred per pupil. Until you know the total state revenue and the total county revenue, you don't have to finalize the priorities, so you could switch those out at any time between now and when you approve your budget in July. Um, so if the board would like us to make some changes in that, we certainly could.
But this is including the, what we talked about in our, uh, high priority schools, the supplements and so forth.
Yes, we didn't make any changes to the, um, seven percent supplement recommended for targeted schools, um, or the principal recommendation. Certainly, you know, none of the, the actual pay scales that came out of the compensation review committee could be finalized until we know what the state pay scales are gonna look like, so it was, we, we really have to wait for that. But based on a lot of assumptions, what state, um, revenue might look like, we had come up with these.
But we're approving an amount, so later, if we wanted to go back and alter some of those?
Certainly, you could. Cause you're not gonna finalize any pay scales tonight, you're just sort of agreeing on a formal request, and then we provide the additional, um, line items, just for county information. They, they allot you on a lump sum basis, they don't do it, um, you know, you, you can always change any of your priorities. Both in the current budget and on the add list.
Right.
And so, uh, we had thought that we would come back to you, um, as soon as we had a better idea of what was going off the state, and once the county finalizes their budget in early June, we would plan another work session, and then we would iron out some of these details.
When do we know what the state, um, and when do we anticipate the state?
They started to release bits of it today, none of it related to salary, it was more ancillary things like, uh, literary coaches and read-to-achieve. We expect the full house budget to come out probably on Monday, is what, uh, is what we're hearing.
And what we saw today was from the House Appropriations on Education, so, I guess they're doing all their committee meetings, and then, um, they are really expecting the whole process to be approved in, in the next few weeks. I mean, I think from the schedule they're talking about, it might be the earliest state budget approval we've had in a long time, but.
I think, and, and what they've done is they've set their spending target early, which is an indicator that they wanna get out of there fairly quickly. And their spending target was a half a percent below what the governor's spending target was. So, I think we'll see that fairly close. Now, of course, we still gotta go over to the Senate, and there'll be some things that'll kick around there, but I don't anticipate a long session like last, uh, like last time. I do know from some communication today that there's discussion about the, uh, supplements at the, the identified high-need schools. And those supplements, as they're written in currently, are for all the certified personnel, which would be teachers, counselors, assistant principals. The principal pay scale, we're readjusting up, so that wasn't, that doesn't include there. And it did not include the, the non-certified folks, and as we, once we know what the targets are gonna be from the state, we can look at that as part of our, our next round of discussion.
Good, thank you for that.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I think I, I'd like to ask a question, can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
Um, uh, having a hard time hearing everything, but, uh, Dr. Markley, did you just say that, um, in light of, um, waiting on the House and the Senate budget, it's, uh, it's a little early to be trying to figure out exactly what we're going to end up with?
Yeah, we, what we're really approving tonight, and it probably, what, what Mary Hazel was telling folks is, we're approving the amount that we request from the county. We will still have an opportunity?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And, and, uh, and I understood that, and, and, uh, and while I know that it is highly subject to change, what we send to county is somewhat a statement of our priorities. And it seemed to me that, um, while this board, uh, appears to have put some of the targeted schools as a priority, I, I feel like we've, uh, we've not included the entire team with some of those targeted schools in our budget. And I did hear, we could adjust that later, but I, I think we need to set our priorities on the front end, so, uh, the staff that are, uh, watching the budget that we're about to move forward to the county, they know where our priorities are. So, for, for that reason, I'd, I'd like to see, uh, some, uh, adjustments in this budget to include, uh, uh, these other folks like teacher assistants, et cetera, that are all part of that team. Um, I'd, I'd like to hear some discussion on that, uh, if you will.
Yeah, well, that, that's why I asked what I asked, in that we're approving an amount, but how we're gonna divide the amount up, cause they have, the county has said, have they not, what the, was it twenty-seven hundred per student? And so, that was the figure that, that I thought we were working with, and then later, we could go back and adjust, I think, Mr. Shell, what you're talking about, cause I agree with you, with, you know, with, and the concerns that, uh, that we have received.
Well, you'd have to look at the areas, those expansion areas to, to make changes in, and you're really looking at, the largest line item is the non-certified, uh, pay piece, which we already reduced down to just by a third to get us to the twenty-seven hundred. That could be delayed a year, uh, but that was a county-wide piece and not just targeted for certain schools. There's, that's the biggest ticket item you've got to work with, uh, in terms of what you can request.
We don't have an idea what that would be, though, do we? How much that, that we're talking?
Mr. Shell had asked me to calculate just for teacher assistants, and not knowing exactly what the board was, was interested in, at seven percent, which was the amount of increase for the teachers. Um, seven percent for, for the schools that we consider targeted would be about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That's just for TAs, um, so that doesn't include custodial clerical, the other non-set, um, non-certified groups. Now, TAs are the biggest non-certified group in the schools, but, um, we just need clarification of what you want, and we could bring that back, once we bring back the revised pay scales, you know, when we know what the state budget is. So, if you just give us direction, we can certainly do that. Um, the other item we looked at was possibly a five hundred dollar bonus, which would be about forty thousand, forty thousand dollars. The difference, one becomes a permanent part of the salary, you know, and one is a, a, a one-time item that you could then determine whether you wanted to continue it. So, um, I know that in the governor's budget, he was looking at bonuses for, um, non-certified. We, we don't know yet what the, the, um, House is gonna propose. So, those are kind of your options, you could, we need to know what group of employees you want it to apply to, and then what rate, and then we can bring, you know, bring back the changes.
Well, what you need tonight, if I'm not mistaken, is a vote, so that, uh, to meet the, uh, the, uh, May fifteenth requirement to get to the county, you need a, and you're, what you're sending over is a budget with some detail on it. And that's why I raised the question, cause I just thought that if an adjustment could be made to include those other folks in those targeted schools, and, and, um, so that they receive the same supplement as, uh, as the teachers, then, um, you would ju, where you can make that up is, um, is some of these other, other areas.
We could.
We've got a significant amount of money in, in raises, and I think we can still do raises, we just phase, phase them in differently.
We could put.
And I know it's all subject to change, but I think it's important that we send the right message to our, uh, our team of employees. If you wanna make a suggestion, Mary Hazel, that might get us off the dime, but I, that's my fault.
One thing that I need clarification on, um, I had, what I had sent to you was based on seven percent, was the increase teachers were receiving. To make it the same would be much, would be fifteen or sixteen percent, so I think that that, when we don't have a supplement for any other TAs in the system, I'm not sure you'd wanna go quite that far. So, if you could just tell us if you're more interested in a supplement versus a bonus, and then we could just change the words and stay within the, the salary and benefit subtotal that's listed here, and then once we have the other proposals, we could bring, we could bring it back to see, you know, how it all balances out.
But that's not gonna change the total amount, what we're talking about, is it?
Well, we can't change the total.
Right.
So, you can, I mean, you could, but you had agreed not to. So, you could either reduce one of the other line items below salary, or since we have so many pending items on salary, we could just say it's the board's intent to add this in, and then we could bring back some proposals to you. But I could change the language on what goes to the county, so they could see that we are looking at that.
You could also, the, the one item you could probably postpone for one year and, and match close to what Mary Hazel wants, is the central office line. You could push that back and, and do that next year. That would be, that's the one item that's a close match to the number that Mary Hazel's giving.
But do we have to decide tonight exactly where we're gonna move things around, or whatever, other than, this is the amount that, that is being requested based upon the twenty-seven hundred, and then we could still change it around internally, from what I understand you're saying?
You are correct.
I would, I would prefer to, um, to, to give a little more thought to this, um, Bruce, than, than to just, uh, make a snap decision, although I think we should add some language to, um, our presentation to the, to the county, to, to state that we are looking at this as an option, and, and this might, um, this might impact, not, not necessarily the bottom line or, or figures, but this is the direction that we may, that we may be heading. Are you comfortable with that, Bruce?
Uh, yes, I think so, I just, uh, the main thing I worried was to make the board and the, uh, community aware that, uh, we were inadvertently leaving some folks behind, at least from the team concept. And so, I think that would, uh, suffice, Tim, will that get us there?
It'll get us there, but it's, at some point, it's a trade-off on, on, on who gets, either, you're trading one, it, it, at some point, cause you're dealing with salary, the salary increase, at, at some point, somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna get more than, than somebody else, so you, you're gonna make one group happy, and it's gonna have a, it's like squeezing a balloon, for lack of a better analogy.
Under, understood, but, but when you, when you set a priority of making that school a priority, and the team that delivers that service to the, to that, uh, population, I think you need to, uh, be inclusive. Uh, you leave some. You leave some people out of it, I tend to think we will, we're sending a mixed message.
Well, we could do it as they did with the ABC money. We could allot so much money per student to the school, and they could determine how they want to divvy it up. I know you don't want to, Mary Hazel, but here, and I understand the emails that we got, that we received, and I understand they are a team, but teachers have a little bit more responsibility. But the whole thing initially was to find the best fit of teachers for the different priority schools. And we may already have them there, or we may need to recruit. And that was the initial, I thought, Dr. Markley, of offering additional money because of the challenge of responsibility.
Yeah, when you looked at turnover rates at the, by schools, these were, these schools were four of the highest ones, and it goes back a lot to the community that they're trying to serve. And so this was a way to keep some of the teachers that were leaving or on the transfer list, to give them an incentive to stay there, and also to send a letter to some high-performing teachers and tell them, here's an opportunity to earn some extra doubling of the supplement. Like I said, I'm willing to push the central office scale revision back a year to accommodate that number, if that's, if that works.
Yeah, I think that the pressure felt by the teachers is also felt by all of the support staff. If a teacher is trying to deal with a population that's difficult and challenging, so is the TA, and so are the support staff, psychologists, social worker. So, you know, unfortunately, I didn't think of it before. Pardon?
Social workers.
Right, I know that, I know. I'm just saying that they all feel it, so I don't feel right leaving one out.
But what about the other schools and the other TAs?
Well, and that's what I was gonna say, to an extent, you know, we're seeing a lot of this sort of spill over into almost every school in the district at this point, so.
But not to the same degree?
No, not to the same degree, but it is becoming more of a systemic problem than it has been in past years. So not to denigrate the good work that the people are doing in those priority schools. So, you know, we definitely want to reward those who are working hard, but we don't wanna do that and to make those who are also working hard at the other schools feel that we're not, we don't value them as well, so.
The other unknown here is the first item, the non-state paid employees, where we have an estimate based on a 3% raise. We don't really know what that final number will be until we have a state budget. So there may be, it may be insufficient, and we have to cut something else, or it may be that we have an excess there. So that's the kind of thing we can't answer until early June.
Since we don't know what the, all the monies are gonna be, can we really settle this tonight?
What you can do is, and we've done, what we've done in the past is say, you have a priority list that if it looks better when you get the final budget, then you pick those items up off the priority list.
Why don't we just add an asterisk to that line item and say we're considering, you know, making a shift on this particular item, and we may be changing this priority.
That's a good suggestion. Yeah, that'll work.
Because what we're approving is an amount.
That's what I'm saying, that this item is subject to change, and this is what we're looking at. We just, this was a last-minute decision, and we're looking to change it.
And we.
It won't change the final amount, but.
In the county manager's budget, remember, it's his recommendation to the Commissioners. Good, I mean, there's always that possibility, because remember, it came with a five, five-and-a-half cent tax increase with it, that the amount that we actually get from them is gonna be less than that $2,700 per pupil. And if that's the case, it'll be looking for items to take off of this list, not add to it.
So we don't wanna give folks promises.
Right, but we do wanna, we do wanna make sure that the county commission, as Bruce said.
Yes.
Understands that.
The need and the required.
This is, you know, we're not misrepresenting what it is we're asking for.
I agree.
In that we're, you know, we're looking at possibly changing a priority. And this was, like I said, a last-minute decision, a last-minute change that we are possibly making, so. I'm comfortable with that, as long as Bruce is comfortable with that. Did you hear me, Bruce?
Well, it's, it sounds like, you know, we sent a budget in for $2,750. The county manager came back with a recommendation of $2,700 and made the Commissioners aware that he would need a five-and-a-half cent tax increase to do that with his priorities in that budget. So we're tasked with what we send to county. If we wanna be accommodative, and it appears that we do, we send them a budget with $2,700 in hopes that that budget holds up. But I can, I can tell you, it will be very challenging for these county Commissioners to raise taxes that much, and I suspect there's possibility that we'll be having to look at this budget again. I just wanted to make sure that the budget that we send sends the proper message, even if we have to adjust it later. And so however you get the $2,700, I mean, Tim's willing to say, I'm willing to make some adjustments here and there to that. That's fine. I just wanna make sure that the Board is supportive of the entire team if we're gonna, if we are in fact gonna be able to have the money in this final budget to send supplements to those schools. I'm hearing, believe I'm hearing, there's a priority of the Board. So I would, I don't know how to get there. I can't hear anything for that.
Yeah.
And I wish I could be there tonight.
For the Board's.
I would, I would say, let's make a motion to include the TAs in the supplement and make a job in other raises to balance the budget at $2,700.
I think we need more time to look at.
I think what we're gonna do, or what was, I thought we were gonna do, was just approve the budget, ask for the $2,700, and then with the understanding that we're gonna go back in internally and do some of these things, Mr. Shell, that you're talking about. I don't think we're gonna necessarily, at least that's not my expectation tonight, to show exactly we're gonna cut from here and add here, because we don't really know what we're gonna end up with.
It's all, okay.
Is that everybody's?
Yeah. Do you need a motion to approve this?
But I do agree with you, though, that we want to stress the fact that we want to include the TAs in all of these. But to me, it would just be, we don't know what we're gonna receive.
And we don't wanna promise.
But it will be done.
Very good.
So we have a motion to.
A motion, a motion to approve the motion.
For a second.
Second.
Any more questions, comments? Although as a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's approved. Thank you.
Yes.
Let's take a five-minute break, then we'll get to Dr. Smith.